All right, we're on the record in KZ 21048, the Garden Avenue Tattoo Petition. This is a request for conditional use to use the property as a tattoo studio pursuant to DuPage Code 37-802.2. It's Bloomingdale Township petition. The property is on Lake Street in Roselle. And the underlying zoning is B2. It's about a half an acre size serviced by water and sewer. The matter was published in the Daily Herald on July 7. And the case has been circulated to various departments of the county as well as neighboring municipalities. I have an objection filed from the village of Bloomingdale. And I don't see any other objections. With that, may I ask the petitioner to introduce himself? Go up to the microphone, sir.
Hello, I'm Max. I've been tattooed for 12 years.
Oh, Max, I need a...
I'm sorry, is this better?
Yeah, but I need a little more than Max.
Max Chaney.
Spell your last name and give us your address.
C-H-A-N-E-Y. And the address, I believe it's 24 West 445 Lake Street.
Okay, and counsel?
My name is Greg.
Introduce yourself first and then I'm going to ask you both to be sworn in.
Right, yeah, no, no, Greg Ladle, L-A-D-L-E, attorney for the petitioner.
Okay, thank you. Would you both raise your hands and be sworn in, please?
You just have to swear or affirm the testimony about the fact of appearing.
I'm present with one member in attendance by Zoom. And petitioner can introduce himself, please.
Yes, thank you. First exhibit is a copy of the general platte survey for the entire plaza. This is a plaza on Lake Street that abuts with Garden Avenue. Our second exhibit is the initial rough floor plan for the space. The space is actually going to be just the westernmost unit of that strip mall. It's approximately 680 square feet, the unit that's involved. Our next exhibit is just the tax bill for proof of ownership. And then we have included in there, our next exhibit is our statement of the addressing the concerns and the conditional use requirements.
Okay, we'll take those in numeric order as you indicated. Temporary protocols during, oh, never mind, that's... Oh, that's your exhibit?
Yes.
Is that all part of the last exhibit?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so that'll be a group exhibit.
But, right, that is the, not only the addressing the conditional use concerns, but including with it because the additional use concerns address health and safety, the compliance with the bloodborne pathogens, the Illinois Body Art Code, and the protocols put in place during the COVID pandemic to comply with the regulations from the CDC and the Illinois government and the Page Health Department.
Okay. Right, go right ahead, sir.
Just briefly, this is, as you can see from the package, this is a proposal for a tattoo parlor. It is not going to be piercing, just tattoos. It's, like I said, a small establishment, 680 square feet. It's designed for four booths. The artists were hopefully working there, working down the street on Lake Street, and are looking to simply move down the road. That's all it is. The building they're in is aging and their intention is to move to a little smaller space that fits their size and having also a more open space. If you'll notice, it's a corner lot with large glass windows. That being said, we can also address and have addressed in our body art application the need for privacy should a client request it with private screens or temporary screening that's placed around a station. As there's no change to the structure itself, it's pre-existing structure. There's no effect on the adjacent properties with regard to supply of light and air, nor would it affect the blood damages for the property. There's nothing of that nature. As far as undue traffic congestion, it's a four-station, proposed four-station business. So you're talking about the maximum of four, maybe five customers present at a time, though the desire is to have it more as a private studio by appointment. It would have public hours, but preferably, generally speaking, in the tattoo industry, not much is done as a walk-in. Everything, people come in, they set an appointment, they place a deposit, and they come back. So it's not like you've had people milling about or spending large amounts of time there unless they're actually getting tattooed. I would note that down the road from here is where a number of the artists work right now, which was formerly Lake Street Tattoo or Roselle Tattoo. It's now Wolf Sparrow, I believe. That's been in the community since 1995.
Could you spell, what did you say, Wolfsboro?
Wolfsparrow, W-O-L-F-S-P-A-R-R-O-W. I think it just changed the name. But the fact is, that has been present on Lake Street for two and a half decades without an issue. I'm advised that Bloomingdale has filed an objection that it's not consistent with their plan. I'm not sure what that means other than they somehow filed tattooing undesirable. I would note that kind of objection raises a lot of First Amendment issues, but beyond that, the fact is, while Bloomingdale may not find it desirable, a very large portion of the general populace does enjoy getting tattoos, showing tattoos, having tattoos. It's a multi-billion dollar business throughout the US. This is no longer what it used to be in the 1980s where it was outlawed. The state of Illinois heavily regulates and governs it. The DuPage County Health Department has control and oversight over this. All the artists are required to have bloodborne pathogen certificates and be prepared to deal with any sort of medical emergency, which you can see we actually have a protocol in place as to what to do. And for the most part, yes, it's going to be call 911, but also it has follow-up procedures and safety protocols to comply again with all the OSHA requirements, requirements. So there should be no additional expense for fire protection, rescue, or relief. Again, we've done exhaustive searches under FOIA. And there is no, as far as we can tell, there was no incidents into this. As far as some sort of fire expense or police expense. And again, as far as the public health, safety, comfort morals. Again, this is business, businesses like this have operated on Lake Street for decades now. It's not been an issue. In fact, as far as the morals, I would point that, yes, it's definitely changed over the last 25 years. From 1995 till now, it is a different thing. You can see it's, it's on TV. They just had the large convention in Rosemont a few weeks ago with artists worldwide. So this is something, well, not approved by everybody, is fairly popular and has no ill effect on anyone outside of the shop. The only person being tattooed is the person in that chair, and they're the only one affected by that activity.
So I think you need to develop, this is a conditional use. We set conditional uses.
Yes.
The public safety requirement that you just mentioned, I think we need a little more information. I know you're regulated and licensed, you know, state of Illinois, et cetera. But can you do something? This will be, if it's granted, this will be a use that is permitted to the current operator and the current owner. So could you give us a little information about the employees, the training, wherever else you can tell us to resolve the public safety issues?
Sure.
Then we're going to need to know about parking, hours of operation, you know, stuff like that.
Sure. Well, you've met the owner, Max Chaney, and he's been tattooing for 12 years now. I've known him for 10 of those. I will say, you know, in those years, there's no complaints, there's no issues. Again, his bloodborne path is incertified, he complies with the Illinois Body Art Code, he is up to date. As far as the health and safety, you'll also notice that everything done is using disposable needles, cartridges, so there is no reuse, which is normally the biggest hazard. Everything comes vacuum sealed from the distributor. It's open, it's sterile, it's used one time, it's placed into a sharp space, safe and disposed of. And those are then picked up through a hazardous material company.
Like a dentist's office or...
Exactly. As far as even fluids and compliance with the Body Art Code, any fluids are actually dried. There's a powder that's added to make them all dry so you don't have any leakage before putting it into the garbage. So you're not dealing with liquid waste in any way. Should you have anything like leftover pigment or that, that's all disposed of that way. Again, in compliance with OSHA and the CDC guidelines. You can see we have attached in our group exhibit the exposure control plan. And that is again taken directly from CDC guidelines and developed over the years. It puts in what are protocols and a standard operating procedure. Things like when garbage cans should be cleaned, floors shall be mopped daily. Everything shall be cleaned. Tubes go in sterile light containers, those are to be disposed of, those are items that have been used. Needles are placed in sharps containers. And then you can see it's got a breakdown of what the setup is. The step-by-step procedures, beginning with a dental lab placed on a stainless steel tray. Again, stainless steel used because it's a non-forest material and therefore can't harbor old germs. The area is actually covered, then, the chair or the area where the body is going to be worked on. Any area that the body is resting is covered with a plastic underneath so that doesn't soak into the chair. It's, they're all, again, leather or synthetic leather armrests or chairs. But again, it keeps the station more sterile after use. That's all removed and the equipment is still all, the chairs are all wiped down with a disinfecting solution. Prior to the procedure, the area is cleaned and sterilized. Anytime gloves are used or come off, got to put new gloves on. The area is also shaved and that, again, that material is disposed of safely. And then after the procedure is over, again, everything sits, it's single use. So for example, your pigment is placed into a small plastic cap on the tray, which is secured in place, it's placed on a small amount of petroleum jelly to hold it in place. Once it's done, that's disposed of. So you don't have someone using a needle dipping into ink and then they're using that ink for someone else. There's no cross-contamination this way. Things like the clip cord for the power on the tattoo machine is actually wrapped with a bag and then with tape. And then after it's used, that bag is removed and it's still wiped down and sterilized. So, and it's not just for the public, it's also for the artists. No one wants to have some sort of exposure or cross-contamination. So it's safety for everyone involved in the procedure. There are instructions, and in fact, the Illinois Department of Health has put out the instructions and warnings to be given out to a customer with instructions on how to follow up and what to do if you notice redness and infection, those types of things. The general rule is contact the doctor or seek urgent care if it should become greatly inflamed because there is a chance for infection anytime you have some sort of irritation in skin. And then we have all of our needle stick procedures as well. This is all kept inside a book at the location as required by the Illinois Body Art Code and the Department, DuPage Department of Health actually upon their inspection and when licensing the facility does verify all these things are present. And you can see also, we have in here our COVID protocols as well. As far as the artist right now, the artist would be Mr. Chaney. And there's one other, I believe, yeah. Both of whom are, have their bloodborne certificate, bloodborne pathogen certificates and have been practicing in the art at least seven years, well, I believe, for one. And I believe the other is 10 as well. Simply put, there is no specific training for it. Generally, this is a trade profession involving apprenticeship. The Illinois Body Art Code requires that the owner of the facility make sure the person is proficient in the skills. And so that would be here, proficiency is demonstrated by the knowledge of the artist. Typically, if they were to hire a fourth artist, someone would come in with a portfolio of their work. You can look at it and based on that portfolio, to the trained eye, there's certain things that tell you whether the person is proficient or not. If a line is straight and smooth and even versus something that's wonky and wobbly, one shows a great deal of skill versus someone else who's just learning. But the other proof is compliance with all those basic safety procedures. Use of gloves, cleaning your area, keeping your area clean, placing the plastic down prior to a client being tattooed, cleaning up afterwards. And again, a lot of it is simply built into it by using only disposable needles, disposable cartridges or tubes, single-use colored cup. Prevent, those are the, were the primary causes of cross-contamination. And if you go back historically, and that's why Illinois, when it adopted the Body Art Code, addressed that because you have two options, disposable, you could get an autoclave and try and sterilize everything. We're not going to do that. It's just easier to use one use and done, it's safer. You're sure that it's not. When you open that package in front of the client, the client can see that it's a brand-new sterile needle or sterile tube direct from the manufacturer. So, and likewise, they can see the single use on the ink, et cetera. So all of that's present, open and visible to the public so they can see what's going on. And also likewise, this all is done in the open front of the shop. The idea being, can we have a shop that's bright, airy, have some plants, make it a little more of a relaxing atmosphere? I know traditionally tattoo shops had it, going back to when it was essentially illegal. Like I said, Chicago banned it for a while. But the fact is that the world has changed since then. And if you look at the, what might have passed 25 years ago for a shop, most of those artists couldn't get a job today because of the fact that it's no longer simply a technical application. It's an artistic application. And so the industry's grown. But as far as safety, again, we've gone through, we're in compliance with everything. And based on our search of FOIA and available records, there's no history of any such incidents or problems in the community.
At the prior or current facility you're talking about?
Yeah, current facility and all of DuPage, as far as we can tell. There have been a few isolated incidents. Generally speaking, it involved shops that were unlicensed. And I know there were a few that popped up. And we're coming in ahead of time saying, here's what we do, here's where we are, inspect us. We want to be open, so.
So you, I'm confused about something. You said that Mr. Chaney and one additional artist are the current artists. But then you said if we hire a fourth, so are there three currently?
The third is going to be there for a while, but his intentions or expressed an intent to move out of state within the next 30 to 60 days with his significant other. So it would probably, by the time this passes through everything and the build-out is completed, he may or may not be there. But the maximum we're looking at is four stations. That's what the application for the, the Department of Health says for the Body Art Code, four stations. That's all they're looking for.
And you also said that you have no internal training procedures so that your prospective artists are qualified by me, by you, by means of determining whether they have appropriate licenses and then they present a portfolio and that's how you hire people?
Correct, and that's in compliance with the Illinois Body Art Code. It talks about that the owner shall determine the proficiency of the artist. Normally speaking, the artists are not employees per se, but independent contractors because normally they set their own hours and those kinds of things, but that's a, and so...
And then you talked about the disposal of your general refuse, miscellaneous garbage that don't qualify for disposal through the Sharpe system.
Right.
Where are your, where is the dumpster in the strip center?
It's on the east side of the building at this point. Although, again, because of the fact that all the fluids are dried up using a powder, walking the garbage down to the dumpster is not an issue because we're not going to have leakage or spillage from any sort of fluids coming out of there.
Are there general restrictions about the disposal of any fluids in the plumbing systems?
No, the fluids are disposed of in the plumbing system.
How do we know that that's the...
Well, because we don't have it here, but the fact is, the plumbing system is in the back of the shop. The stations are in the front where the garbage cans are. Each station has its own garbage can. To clean the station after each use, the station, all the waste is put together with the inks. That's all dried with the pileup. The dental mat or dental bib is then rolled up and that's placed directly in the garbage right by the station. There's no point in carrying it back there. All that would be waste when you've got a much more efficient and safer system directly there without having to move anything.
Have you resolved your lease with the owner of the strip center?
Yes.
Do you have designated parking?
It is not designated parking, but there is ample parking. There are spots, I believe.
Okay, and what are your hours, proposed hours of operation? Now, when you answer this, this could be a condition that we, may or may not be a condition that we impose. So don't tell me, we're open a half an hour a day.
The plan is 11 to 7.
11:00 AM to 7:00 PM? Seven days a week?
Yes.
And I presume 52 weeks a year?
Probably, again, because everyone sort of works their own schedule. What normally would happen in a shop like this is if Mr. Chaney wanted to take a vacation, the other artist may stay and work, whereas he made, and then if the other artist wanted to...
I'm not really asking about that level of detail. You're supposed to be open 12 weeks a year. So hours are seven. All right, do you have anything else you want to add?
I don't believe so.
All right, this is Bloomingdale Township. I'm the member from Bloomingdale, so I won't leave, well, except to the extent that I already have. I won't leave questions, but who would like to begin? And whoever begins will just go down the line. But Ms. Anderson, let me give you the microphone. Oh, you don't have it? Okay, Mr. Hakeem? Anybody have any questions? No questions from anybody? Okay, well, that leaves Mr. Ketter.
No questions.
It's a pretty straightforward case, I guess. All right, I'll take public comment. Is there anyone that wishes to make a statement in support of or in opposition to this petition or ask general questions? Could you raise your hand and be sworn in, please? Could you trade places with the petitioner and take the microphone so that we can all hear you? And begin with your name, if you would, and spell your last name, then tell us your address. And I'll lead you to the next.
Is this okay?
Yep.
My name is Antonia Petrello, P-E-Z-N-P-A-L-I-T-R-E-L-L-O. And I live down the street at 6N157 Garden Avenue in unincorporated Roselle. And I guess to begin, I probably had a couple of questions for clarification and maybe a bit of a statement. One question is, is the business hours, how firm would those be? Because we've had issues with other suites in that plaza in which their business hours go till 4:00 AM. So wondering how strict those business hours would be? Because if this is essentially like an association of petition, right, where they're kind of renting a chair, so to speak, they're contracted. Is there something that, you know, if somebody needs an appointment at 8:00 PM, even though their business hours go till 7:00, would that occur, just as a general example?
As a general matter, this is in a B2 district, so hours are not regulated as according to the ordinance.
Okay.
And the petitioner, as I wrote down, said the present intention is 11 to 7. But let's talk about what happens in practice at your current location. Do you have circumstances where somebody might say, I need a 9:00 PM appointment?
Generally speaking, the 9:00 PM appointment, is it something that occurs? What could have happened is someone had, let's say, a 6 o'clock appointment and it ran long, right? But in terms of starting something new, no, people don't start something new.
And would you accept that as a condition of approval of the requested ordinance? Don't we...
Yeah.
Well, now, I'm sure we're not able to hear you. So why don't you take, can you step up here and... I mean, you don't have to.
Thank you.
Okay, is this good? Okay, what I'm trying to do is I'm trying to get away from the whole traditional tattoo shop, late nights, big crowds, loud music. I got a family, I just had my second daughter. I want to spend more time with my family and that's why I want to do something that's 11 to 7. You know, I don't want to be there late at night. Usually when a tattoo comes in later, the closer towards close, you know, you kind of lose your, your chance in getting tattooed that evening. I've seen people stay late, I've stayed late in my career. I'm, I'm over that whole late night tattoo thing. I really am. I want it to be personal, professional. I want to focus on the tattoos, I want to do an appointment-based environment. I'm tired of the, all the, you know, stereotypical tattoo stuff that kind of comes with it. That's my whole goal. I don't want to, I don't want to be there till 4:00 in the morning, you know, that's terrible.
Until 4:00 in the morning, if we're being honest. But so would that apply for your contracted artists as well?
Yeah, I don't want them to be the kind of guys that are up until, up until 4:00 in the morning tattooing either. I want them to work on their pieces and go home and do their things. You know, I don't want them to be a slave to the needle or something like that.
Yeah, definitely. Okay, that's awesome. I guess my other statement is about parking. I would just say that that's something that you probably have to look into, being someone who lives there and knows the issues with that plaza. And this is nothing against your business. But more generally, if your business goes into this plaza, those 100 spots, probably 75 to 80 of them are filled by auto wheels who used to be in your unit. And so they are filled. The used car lot comes through there and they park their cars like crazy and they come driving through. So yes, you might have four or five spots for your clients, but that might be all you get on a given night, right? So just the statement that that could be an issue of yours and even something that you guys have to deal with, just as making you aware of that space and that plaza. Those comments will be reserved for that plaza. But otherwise, I guess that would be it. I'm not necessarily opposed or generally in favor of, I'm pretty neutral there. I think your safety stuff, I agree with. I think your safety stuff, I agree with and seem fine. I would say parking is a concern of ours and business hours you seem to have dealt with.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
To the petitioner, can you tell us how, I mean, this is maybe a naive question because if I have my initials tattooed on my toe, I expect that the timing is slightly different than, you know, major art. But what's the typical period of time so that we could get a sense of how the scheduling system works?
Okay, so a tattoo procedure usually minimum is about an hour from your consultation with the artist to drawing your tattoo or preparing your design to be a stencil, setting up, putting the stencil on skin, setting up the procedure, all the dental, all the stuff that Mr. Littler went through. Your stencil has to dry for a moment. You do your tattoo. After they are bandaged and they leave, you have to break down your whole setup and then that has to dry with time for the cadicide to properly decontaminate everything. So you're looking at about an hour minimum for one tattoo. But I do a lot of tattoos that are bigger than the initials that would be on your toe, you know? I, I do a lot of tattoos where the drawing alone takes two or maybe even four hours just to draw the tattoo. So my whole plan is to be able to relax and work on the pieces that I want to work on because I don't do a lot of those initial tattoos. I don't do, I don't really tattoo people's faces or anything like that. I, I don't do a lot of small, small tattoos. I really have to make the effort to make the time to do the small ones because I do so many large tattoos. So anywhere from an hour to four hours per customer, maybe.
Do you regulate your occupancy or schedule your appointments in such a way as to limit the number of people that are in the shop?
Yes, definitely.
How do you do that?
I usually, right now my schedule looks like I've got two, at the most, three customers a day. I usually do two as in one half of the day in the beginning and then the second half of the day. And then they, they usually come in while the other one's leaving.
And prospectively, that's essentially how it will work in the future.
Yeah, that's, that's a pretty good routine that I've been in for a while. It works well.
Okay. What else is in this center?
There is an insurance office. There's a barber shop. A pawn shop. And I believe the psychic gallery is closed. I'm not sure if there's anything else. I think that's it.
What's the story on the used car dealer that we heard about?
They used to be in the unit that I'm looking to build in and they moved to a standalone building at the other end of the plaza.
Okay, no restaurants or?
There's no food in the building?
No.
Does any of this suggest any, any other questions to any member of the board? Then can we take a closing statement from the petitioner? Make a closing remark?
Sure. You know, I've been tattooing for 12 years and that's, it's a career that I really enjoy. I'm just looking for a place that I can focus on my projects, you know, because they're not just little tattoos anymore. They're things that I really need to spend, you know, the time on, that people pay good money for. I tattoo a lot of really serious clients. I spend a lot of money. I see the same customers once, twice a month. And I just want to keep, keep going with that.
Okay. So here's how the procedure works. It sounds like we're concluded. We don't need any additional evidence or information presented from the petitioner. So we'll close the public hearing this evening and then defer the matter for our voting session called our recommendation meeting that occurs on the first Thursday of each month. It's a meeting that is held in this room at 5:30 on that particular evening. So, and then when we finish and make our determination or recommendation, the matter proceeds to the county development committee and then when they're concluded, it passes to the full county board. So that's generally the procedure. Thank you for your presentation. I get where you're going. If you have any other written materials or information that you want to present. The record open until, let's see, when's our recommendation meeting? August 5?
Okay.
So you have to really get us any, I mean, if you want to write a closing statement or whatever, I'm not asking you to do that, but you gotta have it to us a week before that recommendation. And it's to be addressed to our staff as in the lease. So that's it this evening. Thank you again for your presentation. We'll close this hearing. I do have another matter. So let's not abandon ship here. Okay, thank you. Yep, thank you. So I've been asked to read this letter, which is a public comment, not related to this petition, but a general public comment. Each of you board members have a copy. This is received, I think by email from a citizen whose name is Edgar Pal, or Pal, it's P-A-L. And the statement is as follows. It's, the subject is approval of minutes. Mr. Paul writes, "I was pleased to hear that on Tuesday, the Attorney General's Office affirmed that the zoning board feels is a public body and is therefore required by the Open Meetings Act to approve its minutes, approve its meeting minutes. Previously, the board has not done this. Rather, the board has simply posted the meeting transcripts online without taking the official step of approving them. I hope that the board will rectify this concern going forward by approving all meeting minutes as mandated by Section 2.06B of the Open Meetings Act. Thank you very much for your service on the board." So that's it. That's public comment. Nothing further, so we can adjourn.
So what we don't, that's the question, are we, are you doing minutes now, going forward?
Well, let's discuss, well, the state attorney is working.
Oh, okay. That's all I know.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you very much. We're closed.